Recordings on?
Yeah, should be.
Ready? Okay.
Yeah, because there's three second delay.
It is six thirty and I call the March seven twenty twenty-three regular session of the Franklin County Planning Commission meeting to order. Before we get into the meeting, I will turn things over to staff to discuss meeting format.
So tonight's meeting will be conducted through a hybrid in-person slash online meeting platform. If you wish to comment or need clarification on public hearing item, please send us an email at planningquery@franklincountywa.gov before the public comment period closes. Once public comment period close on said item, comments will not be included as part of discussion. To those in attendance, please remember to speak in the microphone when addressing staff or public comments slash testimonies.
Will planning staff please call roll and announce whether we have a quorum?
Mike Corales?
Here.
Mike Vincent?
Here.
Layden Low? Melinda Didier? Peter Harpster has recused himself for tonight's meeting. Manny Gutierrez?
Here.
Stacy Knighton?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Will staff in attendance please introduce yourselves?
My name is Aaron Gunnerson. I'm the Planner One.
Ryan Nelson, Planner One.
Thank you, and I will lead us in pledge allegiance now.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Knighton and seconded by Commissioner Vincent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the February seventh twenty twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Knighton and seconded by Commissioner Gutierrez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. It is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting. Good evening and welcome. I will turn things briefly over to our staff host who will go over the ground rules for tonight's hearing.
So in-person public testimony divided two groups for and against slash neutral. They'll be called upon to speak during their allotted in-person public testimony section, giving their name for the audio record and position on the proposal. Call-in public testimony will be called upon individually during the call-in public testimony portion of the hearing, given their name for the audio record as well as if they're in favor, neutral, or against the proposal. Please mute audio when not speaking. Emailed comments received during the public hearing will be read into the record by staff after the call-in public testimony section of the hearing. All comments and questions shall be addressed to the Planning Commission and should be relevant to the application and not be of a personal nature. Each speaker shall have five minutes to provide testimony and shall speak into the microphone. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers who are part of a group or organization, please select a representative to speak on behalf of the group. Behavior such as clapping, booing, hissing, or remarks is prohibited. Every citizen here tonight should have the opportunity to testify without such distractions.
Are there any questions regarding the public hearing ground rules? Turning for a moment to our commission members, please let us keep in mind that we are prohibited by law from communicating with members of the public on this subject matter of these hearings except in these hearings. We also may not participate in a decision in which there is an appearance of conflict of interest to the average person. So let us take a minute to consider as to the matters which are before us for hearing today. Whether we have had any ex parte communications, whether we have any ownership interests in the properties, whether we have any business dealings with proponents or opponents of the matter, or whether we have business associates or immediate family who may either benefit or be harmed by a decision in these matters. Are there any commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? I know Rich Underwood and I have-
We're not- Underwood isn't in this. It's Mullen.
Yeah, sorry. I know- that's what I meant. I know Randy Mullen and do business with him occasionally. And he's a friend. I am not going to recuse myself unless I am requested to. Anybody else?
I also know Randy Mullen. I don't do any business dealings with them, but I know him pretty well. But I will not recuse myself unless requested.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so let the record show that Commissioner Knighton and Corales both have some contact with Randy. The order of the hearing shall be as follows. Planning staff shall provide a staff report. The commission may ask questions of staff. The applicant or applicant's representatives presentation. In-person public testimony for, against, or neutral. Call-in public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Email public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project to be read into the record by staff. Final comments. Clarification of public statements that occurred during the testimony portion of the public hearing. Then we will close the public hearing and planning commission discussion of the proposed action. Are there any procedural questions before we begin the public hearing? Seeing none, we will proceed to item one. Item one is a public hearing for file ZC twenty twenty-one dash two, SEPA twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. Is a proposed rezone. Three parcels with combined area consisting of sixty-four point eight-three acres in size. Parcel number one-two-four-three-zero-zero dash four-seven-eight. Parcel one-two-four dash three-zero-zero dash one-two-zero. And parcel one-two-four dash three-zero-zero dash one-two-one. From the current zoning designation of agricultural production, AP twenty, to rural community, RC one. The land is located in the rural shoreline development area as identified in the county comprehensive plan. I declare the public hearing for ZC twenty twenty-one dash two, SEPA twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one to be open at six thirty-seven. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Yeah, so this is an application to change the zoning approximately sixty-four point eight-three acres of land from AP twenty, or agricultural production twenty, to RC one, rural community one. Land situated within a limited area of more intensive development, or otherwise known as a lammard, with being designated as kind of rural shoreline development. Kind of an area known as Columbia River West within the comp plan. So within the Frank County Comprehensive Plan. Designation placed. Property is eligible to zone rural community one, RC one. This application was originally submitted to our office on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. That's kind of why it has the twenty twenty-one file name. Initial review application has determined that the applicant need to address a variety of items before the application could move forward. On January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, the application is deemed complete by staff for the purposes of further processing. So the property is located south and east of Self Landing Road, west of Richview Drive, and north of Fanning Road. So like I said, the parcel numbers, one-two-four-three-zero-zero-four-seven-eight, one-two-four-three-zero-zero-one-two-o, and one-two-four-three-zero-zero-one-two-four. And, um, let's see, where was I at? Oh, yeah. In a narrative statement submitted the application, applicant described the proposal as furthering intentions of the comprehensive plan, providing increased residential development opportunities as conveyed by the plan. Applicant first stated that the zone change request would be denied. It would place undue burden on the property owner's ability to benefit from development interest in the area as provided to other nearby properties. The application also included a SEPA environmental checklist and narrative. And then, so for public noting, a public notice published in Frank County Graphic on January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Property owners who on mile were mailed the notice on February ninth, twenty twenty-three. Sign was placed on property on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and planning staff notified agencies on February ninth, twenty twenty-three. Notice of application was made to SEPA registry as part of the optional DNS process on February ninth, twenty twenty-three. DNS be issued following the public hearing of the planning commission on March seventh, twenty twenty-three. And then, as you can see here, this is kind of visually the area which we're kind of talking about. That would be part of that proposed change. And then, this is also kind of another view. That shows kind of the zoning. So, as you could see, you know, all of that's what we call, you know, rural community one zone. And then that's, of course, I didn't label that, but that's rural community five zoning. But yeah, so that's kind of comments there. And then, we received a couple of public comments. One, you know, we received on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. They stated they were opposed to the proposed site-specific zone change based upon potential impacts to groundwater aquifers and county roads. Addition of the applicant's agent to show how the proposed site-specific zone change meets requirements of the comprehensive plan. You just see the agency public comment section for more information as far as that. We received another comment, which we kind of handed out to- it came yesterday. And so it wasn't able to make it into the packet. So I'll read it into the record here. So this person, their comment is, "I have no objection to proposed rezone action since it is in compliance with the Frank County Comprehensive Plan and would only allow one acre or greater lots on the property. However, I do have a concern with the future subdivision of the property into lots, which I understand will be treated as a separate approval action based upon information submitted with this rezone request considering the rezone of the Underwood property to allow one acre lots last year. There appears to be a likelihood that several hundred lots will be developed in general area. That the main access routes for travel to these lots will become the Fraser Road alignment, which will be completed by the subdivision actions and will then terminate on the south end at Fanning Road." Frank County apparently does not consider traffic impacts of the rezoned phrase, but rather at the subdivision approval phase of a project, the Fraser Street extensions north of Fanning will bring several hundred cars into Fanning from both the new developments and the existing residential housing that is in that and north of that area. Fanning Road is a farm road that is a gravel overlay with no shoulders, steep grades to the farmlands on each side. It was not built for this level of traffic. Once traffic gets to Fanning, it's the only option to- its only current option is to head east and then south on Easy Street. Talking to the county road department, I was told there are no plans for the county to complete and extend Fraser Road through the old McDonald Farms where other county will require developers to do that when the former McDonald Farm is developed. Now makes sense that the properties from Dent Road out to the north will be developed in a sequent manner from south to north, but said appears that properties further north are being developed first. Because of that non-sequential pace of developments, the county should require the northern developers to pay for the county to extend Fraser South through the McDonald Farmland, and then recoup their money later when the McDonald Farmlands are developed. If that is not done, Fanning will become overloaded, and in the event that the former upper Kohler Vineyards are developed for one acre lots using a road pattern similar to the pattern that was inserted in the recently withdrawn Kohler Small Lot Rezone Action. There is the possibility that McDonald Drive currently dead in Kohlusack might be connected with the future Kohler development. That'd be extremely detrimental action as northern traffic for Fraser might then seek to use McDonald Drive, which is even more primitive road with several hairpin-type curves to travel to the Pasco. McDonald Drive should remain a local access-only road, even if there is a southern access route added to it in the future. Therefore, it's the county to make a policy that subdivision actions on the properties north of Fanning will not be approved. Call Fraser slash Dent Roads has been completed through the old McDonald Farm to connect with Dent Road. The road infrastructure area must be in place to allow before these large developments that will add hundreds of vehicles to carry road system are allowed to be built out. So anyways, that's- that was that comment. So. So getting to staff analysis. So, the comprehensive plan designation of property is rural shoreline development. Maybe did I do this right? Okay. Or here, I'll just start from the top. So the Frank County Comprehensive Plan land use map guides development redevelopment lands with unincorporated areas at county. All zone change activities are to be guided by a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan designation of the property is rural shoreline development. The lands bounding of the property northwest and south sides are also rural shoreline development. And the land bounding the property east has a comprehensive plan to use of agriculture. The east property line of this property marks the dividing line between the rural shoreline development and agricultural comprehensive plan land use designation. So going back to this. Is essentially that red line right here. That is the edge between- so all the stuff here is the rural shoreline development, and all the stuff here is agriculture. So essentially, they're- by rezoning, they're pretty much just right up to that line. Which will also be- so anyways. So the current zoning of the subject property is AP twenty. Properties are surrounded by land zoned RC five to the north, RC one to the west and south, and AP twenty to east. The minimum lot size for the current zoning district AP twenty is twenty acres, while the minimum lot size for the proposed zoning district RC one is one acre. The proposed rezone is consistent with the comprehensive plan designation of rural shoreline development, which allows for lots to be created down to one acre. Or, yeah, one dwelling unit per acre. So, site-specific zone change will allow for more intensive use of land upon any future subdivision slash short plating. Site-specific zone change will result in a change in the development patterns of the land, changing the property from agriculture designation to residential one. The development standards include density or different between RC one and AP twenty districts. Furthermore, the primary permitted uses in RC one include essentially single-family dwelling. Yeah, and yeah, you can grow fruits and vegetables and stuff like that. Which is kind of different from the AP twenty zone, which is, you know, not only do you do single-family dwelling, but you can do ag, you can do rural retail business, social agriculture that's grown on-site, veterinary clinic, nursery, you know, there's a wide variety of uses there. So, let's see. So likewise, the permitted accessory uses, you know, which is, you know, ability to raise animals, family darecom, hog occupation, accessory is more restrictive. So essentially, you know, the idea is, you know, yeah, there's, you know, obviously it might be more intensive necessary for like, you know, residential as far as roads and everything and things of that nature, but it's also more restrictive in the sense that, you know, you're not able to do intensive commercial agricultural-based activities and things of that nature. So it's, you know, it's more restrictive as far as what you can or can't do. And then the rezone request is kind of consistent with surrounding area. Single-family residential uses exist or are planned for the general area. Yeah, as you could tell from the surrounding properties north, you know, just all around it, at least three of the four sides are pretty much residential. So according to the purpose RC one zone is to provide rural residential environment permitting, you know, one dwelling unit per acre. Lands of the district are normally located in rural areas that are outside designated urban growth area boundaries and contain residential development, large lots and expansive yards. Structures in the district are limited to single-family dwellings and customary accessory structures. Certain public facilities and institutions may also be permitted, provided their nature and location are not detrimental to the intended rural residential environment. So according to Frank County Comprehensive Plan, rural shoreline development is characterized by a mixture of half-acre to five-acre residential developments, scattered single-family residence, small farms, and places where residential developments are expected to continue to occur. Existing developments were created through traditional county subdivision shore plaque guidelines. The maximum residential density from this area ranges from one dwelling unit per acre to one dwelling unit per five acres. This designation provides for infill development and redevelopment of lands with the intention that this area be exclusively residential in nature. And the Columbia River Rust area states, "Prior to growth management, numerous shoreline and adjacent tract developments were built along Frank County shoreline. These lots range size from half acre to five acres." Nineteen F five, this area was designated to be included in the Pasco urban growth area. Consistent with existing land use patterns, area development has continued with the area since the adoption nineteen F five plan. Past request, this area was removed for urban growth boundaries as part of the two thousand eight plan update. But this area is also considered a type-one lammard, a limited area more intensive rural development. And then it kind of gives explanation as far as the logic, or what they call lob, logic outer boundary, which kind of characterizes that, you know, it's a boxed-in area. So it might have gotten faster than, yeah, it looks like it sped through that. So, we did receive some comments from the following agencies. One of it's Confederate Tribes Culver Reservation, which kind of had requested potentially, not, you know, not necessarily at this point in time, but, you know, if development were to occur, potentially, you know, to have them or at least try, you know, may request the ability of doing, you know, a cultural resource survey. You know, if there's any, like, prior to any permit pulled for any land, you know, land development activity. And then, county- Frank County Public Works Department also responded. And so their comments were, you know, just any new lots to be created. As a result of this proposed zone change, they require access to county roads. They'll be subject to the county road approach policy. You know, requirements include permits, approach construction, minimum size standards, et cetera. And then mitigation fees will be required. Required will be determined upon development of the property, and will go towards future road upgrades if development continues to grow in the area. And then they also stated here, "Per engineer's report dated four eighteen twenty fifteen, titled Dent Road Future Extension." And a copy of the report is located in the agency comment section of the packet. So full road width roadway is to be constructed to current county standards for Fraser Road. And then Washington DOT kind of responded. And I think they were pretty much saying they weren't opposed to the rezone. Trying to remember exactly what their comments were, but. But yeah, they basically stated they weren't opposed to the proposed rezone. Look forward to the county to review future development proposals. Maybe, and I think they made mention of something about traffic impact analysis potentially at some point down the road, but not at this juncture. So.
Aaron, would you like me to read what Washington says? Because I haven't pulled up.
I probably don't need to. I mean, it's in the packet. I was just kind of giving a brief rundown.
But yeah, what you said is basically what they said.
Exactly. That's what we're doing, Ryan. So. So, I guess we'll go with the suggestive finding of facts. Actually, I'll give a brief overview of this real quick. So we got basically five findings of fact that we do as far as our process. You know, kind of is the proposal in accordance with the goals and policies, comprehensive plan. The effect proposed on the immediate vicinity will be, or will be materially detrimental. Is there value? There is value merit in the proposed scheme as a whole. Conditions should be imposed in order to mitigate any adverse effects impacts from the proposal, and I think the other one's about common agreement. So, so the first finding fact kind of determined the application to rezon approximately sixty-four point eight-three acres of land to RC one rural community is in accordance with the goals of the comprehensive plan. Purpose RC one rural community district is to provide rural resident environment permitting, one dwelling unit per acre. You know, lands within this district are normally located rural areas that are outside urban growth area boundaries containing residential development with large lots, expansive yards. Structures in this district limited to single-family dwellings, customary accessory structures. It's kind of the same retread of what I stated earlier. Rezoning the property to RC one is supported by comprehensive plan. Be considered a proper implementation of plan. Suggestive facts, the effects of the proposed on the immediate vicinity- for Fraser Road. And then Washington DOT kind of responded, um, and I think they were pretty much saying they weren't opposed to, um, the rezone. Um, trying to remember exactly what their comments were, but, um, but yeah, they, basically said they weren't opposed to the, uh, proposed rezone, look forward to county to review future development proposals, um, you know, maybe, and I think they made mention something about traffic impact analysis potentially at some point down the road, but not, not at this juncture.
Aaron, would you like me to read what Washington says? Because I haven't pulled up.
I probably don't need to, I mean, it's in the packet. I was just kind of giving a brief rundown, um.
But yeah, what you said is basically what they said.
Exactly, that's, that's what we're doing, Ryan. So, um, so, um, I guess we'll go with the suggested finding of facts. Actually, I'll give a brief overview of this real quick. So we got basically five findings of fact, um, that we do as far as our process. Um, you know, kind of is the proposal in accordance with the goals and policies, comprehensive plan. The effect of proposal on immediate vicinity will be, or will be materially detrimental is their value. There is value merit in the proposal scheme as a whole. Conditions should be imposed in order to mitigate any adverse effects, impacts from the proposal, and I think the other one's about common agreement. So, um, so the first finding fact, um, kind of determined the application to reason approximately sixty-four point eight-three acres of land to RC one, rural community is in accordance with the goals of the comprehensive plan. Purpose RC one, rural community district is to provide rural resident environment permitting one dwelling unit per acre. Um, you know, lands within this district normally located rural areas that are outside urban growth area boundaries contain residential development with large lots, expansive yards. Structures in this district limited to single-family dwellings, customary accessory structures. It's kind of the same retread of what I stated earlier. Rezoning the property to RC one is supported by comprehensive plan, be considered a proper implementation of plan. Second finding facts, the effects of the proposal on immediate vicinity will, oops. So second part is the effect, or second finding fact, the effect of proposal on immediate vicinity will not be materially detrimental. Consistency is surrounding area, the rezone request is consistent surrounding area. Single-family residence uses exist or are planned for the general area. Lands northwest, south of the site are already zoned RC one, RC five. This rezone will be a logical extension of that designation. Um, you know, public works regarding extension of Fraser Road, time of development long required, requirement of, uh, potential requirement of mitigation fees. Yeah, third fact, that there is merit and value in the proposal for the community as whole. The rezone to RC one implements comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan designates the site for rural shoreline development. The proposed rezone to RC one is consistent with the plan designation. Proposes also consistent with the policies, the plan that encourage the development of a full range of residential environments. Uh, extension of Fraser Road will allow for better connection, both self-landing, fanning road. Um, you know, conditions are required, uh, to be imposed in order to mitigate any adverse impacts from the proposal. Um, you know, or at least, um, you know, when time comes to development, you know, public works and their comments have already stated that, yeah, more likely it'll be, probably be mitigation fees. And yeah, common agreement between the county and the petitioner, petitioner is not required for this application. And then these are, so suggested conditions approval. Future development of the site shall comply with the county development regulations, including but not limited to Title sixteen subdivisions, Title seventeen zoning, and Title eighteen environment of the Frank County Code. Future development of the site shall comply with local, state, and federal agency standards. Uh, cultural resource survey may be required prior to issuance of any building permit requiring ground disturbance. Last is road access, future development of the rezone site shall be valid for following. Any new lots may be created as a result of the county zone change, uh, that will require access to county roads, so it will be subject to the county road approach policy. Uh, requirements include required per, uh, required permits, approach construction, minimum size, et cetera. Any mitigation fees required will be determined upon development of the property and will go toward future road upgrades if development continues in the area. And also, you know, we got the dent road future expansion, you have the full width roadway to be constructed, current county standards for Fraser Road. So, so lastly, uh, you know, the recommended ocean, um, you know, would be to move to the Board of County Commissioners to pause the recommendation, five findings of fact, four conditions of approval, as provided for at staff report. So, anyways. Let me get out of that, or actually, I'll keep in this show. So, I guess, yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Does any commissioner have any questions of staff? I have one, and it doesn't really pertain to anything, but from, from the red line you drew, is east that golden farmland?
Yeah, well, east is, it's all under the ag, uh, comprehensive plan designation.
Meaning you can't develop it.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can't, it's not for, it's not for, it's not for residential development, I, I don't know what, you know, so you mean by the golden zone.
That it can't be developed, there's a line, there's a fantasy line out there somewhere that somebody set up.
Yeah, it's, it's essentially that line, and that's, and it's kind of interesting because that's also the alignment of Fraser Road, but yeah, that is the, the line between the rural shoreline development area.
They can't apply to do that next piece over until we change that ag zoning thing.
No, unless they go through a full-blown comp plan.
I wasn't sure where that was at, but I knew we were close. Okay.
So the rest of the surrounding areas besides the east is RC one, which is the rural community to the north, to the west, and to the south.
To the west.
To the west.
Yeah, you said the east.
The east is, the east is that AP twenty, which is that invisible line we're talking about, but the rest is, is, is west RC one.
Yeah, so, let me, if I go back, this, oh, yeah, so, yeah, so you see this weird darker green, that's all RC one. And then this blue, which of course I didn't put anything in there, but that's RC five. And so you could see, like, down here and then up here, that's the line essentially between, uh, rural shoreline development and, um, the agriculture area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more commissioner questions?
Just my comment on the, on this letter that we got.
Yep.
Concern which, since this is just a rezone application.
Yeah, it's, well.
Well, it's addressed on the, uh, here as far as the engineering, the roads and that kind of thing, uh, which would occur at the short plat phase of this thing, once it goes through.
Yeah, it would occur at the, whatever, the subdivision process. Um, that's really when all of that would start coming into play. That's where public works would be like, hey, you know, you need to pay some mitigation fees, um, and slash build that section of Fraser Road. Yeah, that would definitely start pulling into, coming into play at that point.
But that RC five to the north, that's pretty much populated at this point, right?
Pretty much, yeah, if I recall right, there's, there are quite a few homes there.
Built out, so to speak.
Yeah, mhm.
All righty.
Okay, any more commissioner questions? The applicant is not here or a representative, is he?
Doesn't look like it.
Nope, okay. Is there any in-person public testimony for the project? For the project?
Well, I just have a couple of questions. I'm not opposed to it either.
Um, well, let's put you at the neutral then. Is there any negative comments?
Or, well.
What?
I was gonna say neutral and negative are like the same.
Neutral, negative? Neutral, you need to come up to the microphone?
Yeah.
State your name.
Yeah, my first name is Mian, M-I-A-N. Last name is Haq, H-A-Q. I live on ninety Alta Lane, just on west side of the proposed development. I, I happen to be civil engineer and developer, so I'm looking long-range, you know, there are going to be future developments in this area, um, particularly utilities. And when I say utilities, I have in mind about the drawdowns, you know, the aquifier, you know, just like, there was a comment by some other person, you know, in, uh, two of my neighbors, they had to re-drill their wells. Okay, so now we are putting twenty or forty, I don't know how many, homes are going to be there. So we're talking about thirty wells, then there are going to be additional wells as we go on the east side, you know, or the, or the south. So I, I, I wonder if county is looking the long range. I'm not opposed to this, uh, development, but we have to keep in mind, you know, we may have to re-drill our wells too, uh, when we have twenty or thirty wells going in this subdivision, so, just wanted to have a comment, you know, so.
Aaron.
So one solution could be, you know, the, when you're getting application for short plating, ask for the community well.
The, we don't do that, the health department does all that, correct, Aaron?
Um, are you talking about, you know, just to, to rephrase what you were saying, is that you're talking about at the time of application?
Applications, you know, see, you're going to get the.
So are, are you talking about like, application as in, like, actual, like, subdivision? Because those are.
Subdivision, subdivision.
Yeah, so at subdivision, we do actually ask for, you know, what is it, are you doing? You know, are you on community, is that, you know, are you doing exempt wells? You know, I mean, they have to list that.
Yeah, that's where, you know, I thought this will be.
Yeah, or, yeah, because at this point with a rezone, that's not as much under discussion on that, you know, as far as.
But down the road, you're going to start getting requests, you know, individual lot, each well, each one is going to have a well, so when you, uh, when you get the application as a subdivision, that will be the time to.
Yeah, so at subdivision, that's when we really start looking at, you know, what are the impacts to the roads, what are the impacts to a lot of those other things? Um, you know, right now, as far as like rezones, I mean, we look at, you know, like, say, density and stuff like that, so we usually look at, like, you know, the worst-case scenario. Um, oftentimes as far as like densities, you know, um, but usually when it comes to like very particular things like traffic patterns or things of that nature, that's usually at the time of subdivision, is when we really start getting into some of those things.
Yeah, so, so, you know, if in the, uh, in the minutes of meeting or whatever, if you can, you know, put it down, you know, something to consider, you know, so.
So, so Aaron, would this be, um, a proposition you can make to Mr. Haq where he can come back at, um, development application?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, when that goes to be a subdivision, I mean, if I recall right, you're off of Alta Lane, right?
Right.
So yeah, you'd be in the public notice window or that radius, because anybody at least out there is within one mile of that gets publicly notified.
At that point, you can also come back and, and, and speak and, on your concerns as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Come on up, yeah.
My name is Carol, C-A-R-O-L-W-Y-S-O-C-K-I, and my husband's also online here. Um, I have similar concerns as my neighbors who are really right, I live right on this cul-de-sac here, and the re-drilling of the wells are pretty close to the road that my neighbor across the street had to re-drill theirs. The original well had been built, drilled about twenty years ago, and they had to re-drill theirs. And then, uh, Mian's is a couple more houses down, and then it's on your, near neighbor to the north that re-drilled their well. So, uh, we don't have really deep wells right now, but we're at hundred and thirty feet, two hundred, somewhere in there. Yeah, two forty, so we're just kind of concerned if we're going to have to re-drill our wells, um, as the water level drops.
Well, like I said, those things would come out at the time of development.
Yeah, well, we're just trying to, I guess, trying to address things upfront. Um, and then just one more little quick thing, uh, my husband's an ag guy, and he noticed on the application that it was checked there was no noxious weeds, so he says there is R-U-S-H, rush, skeleton weed, and knap weed, K-N-A-P.
So, yeah, so a lot of that, I mean, that's us looking at Fish and Wildlife's maps, um, and that really didn't come up there. Um, what it comes up with is, I think it was like shrub step, you know, obviously about.
Okay, well, as long as you, you've got the paperwork fine, we just wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any call-in testimony? Any email public testimony? Does staff have any final comments?
Uh, nope.
Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone from the audience? Nope. The public testimony portion of public hearing, of the public hearing for ZC twenty twenty-one dash two, SEPA twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one is closed. Is there any discussion amongst the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I would move that we forward to, move to forward ZC twenty twenty-one dash O two. The Board of County Commissioners have positive recommendation with five findings of fact and four conditions of approval as provided for in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Vincent has moved and Commissioner Gutierrez has seconded that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for ZC twenty twenty-one dash two, SEPA twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, with five adopted findings of fact and four conditions of approval. Is there any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Corales?
Yes.
Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Stacy Knighton?
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez?
Yes.
The motion has passed.
Okay, very well. That's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, there's nobody in the audience? Do we have any updates on past stuff?
Um, well, um, we're hoping to bring Title sixteen to the board by the twenty-first. We'll see how that goes.
Twenty-first of?
March, yeah. We're, we're hoping, we'll, we'll see how that goes, because we still gotta get some, because, you know, we gotta get all the stuff in by the tenth, and we'll, we'll see.
Okay.
But yeah, other than that, I think everything else, I mean, the, the treatment plant, all that, I mean, the, whatever, the city of Pasco stuff, I mean, that's already been passed by the board. And then, yeah, and then everything else was kind of either pulled or whatnot, but there definitely is going to be a pretty big meeting in April. We got at least four different items, I want to say, coming. Um, yeah, we got, what was it? Um, let's see, what was the items? Oh yeah, we got zone change, um, we got, what was it, natural gas, um, it's kind of similar to what the city of Pasco, like what you guys proved a number of months back, kind of, it's like the natural gas, it's for a dairy farm where it converts to natural gas. It's based on exact term, but it'll be that. Um, the shrine, uh, management plan, that's coming, uh, so we'll have a little workshop on that. And then we're bringing back something that had passed from you guys way back in twenty twenty-one, and it just got, kind of got lost in the shuffle, we never brought it to the board, but now we're realizing, oh crap, we need to get this back on, uh, up to the board, but we're gonna bring it by you guys again, just to make certain that, you know, it's because of the, you know, it's, it's been at least two years since we brought it to you guys, and we thought we brought it to the board, turns out we didn't, I don't know how that happened. But yeah, you'll get to look at that again and yay or nay, I think, if I recall right. I don't know how that's gonna go. But yeah, so that's one of the items, and so yeah, it's gonna be a pretty big meeting.
Okay.
But yeah, outside of that, I don't, can't think of anything else as far as updates and future meeting stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, it is seven sixteen, and the planning commission is adjourned. All right, uh, it is seven sixteen, and the planning commission is adjourned.
Thank you.